Good evening. Thank you for coming. Praise God. Now, tonight is a special meeting. It's not our usual prayer meeting because we have a special person with us. We have not had enough from him. He has this gift of opening up the word, diving deep, and he make it so simple and with a lot of his life illustrations. Of course, you know, those of you who are at the church camp, lift your hands. And those who watch him on YouTube, you lift your hands, one. Okay, so no further delay, no further introduction. We know him so well, Dr. John Andrews, over to you.
Thank you. Wonderful. It's great to be back. And thank you. I know Wednesday night, people are busy. You've got work, you've got family, you've got all sorts of stuff going on. And so thank you so much for making the effort. Thank you for inviting me. And although this is normally your prayer meeting and we've got a bit of teaching, we might end up with a little bit of prayer at the end in terms of the theme that I feel like the Lord has led on my heart for you. But it is a great, great joy to be with you again. Wonderful to be back. It doesn't seem like it was June since the last time we met. I think the clock is going faster than it's ever gone, right? I've been teaching this week in Tongling. And you look up and I'm sure that clock in Singapore is moving faster than it normally moves. The week has just flown past and I've just had a wonderful time. So thank you, pastor. Thank you for the invite again. Thank you for an invite back to your church camp next year. That really has touched me. I'm so looking forward to that already. And thank you for letting me in some small way be a part of your journey. And it's wonderful to see so many people here tonight. So we're gonna jump in. And I want to bring a little bit of ministry tonight around the idea. The broad theme that I've been given is the idea of stepping up again. But I want to think specifically about us as a Christian community, stepping up at a missional level for those around us. So that's sort of gonna be where we're nudging. And I want to talk about broadly this theme, loving where you live. I know that might seem a bit strange, but loving where you live. And I feel like the Lord's led that on my heart for you. So hopefully, a couple of things I share tonight will make sense and just encourage you. So if you've got a Bible and you want to follow a reading with me, I'm going to read from Jeremiah, chapter 29. Now, for many Christians, as soon as I say Jeremiah 29, we're automatically jumping to one of our favorite ever verses. "I know the plans I have for you," says the Lord. And we will read that beautiful verse in just a moment. But of course, the context of Jeremiah 29 is really troublesome. And it's really important we're leaning into that. So before we read the passage, just in case you're not aware, let me just set the scene for you. Jeremiah, the book of Jeremiah, is really a deeply, deeply troublesome book. It essentially begins with God telling Jeremiah, "I want you to prophesy to my people." And essentially, I need you to tell them that they're going to go into exile, that this is going to happen and nothing's going to change. And so there's this real sense of sadness and burden and inevitability in the book of Jeremiah, which of course, then if you go from Jeremiah into Lamentations, it gets even worse. So you get this incredible sense of inevitability in the story of Jeremiah. We're heading somewhere which is really painful. And some of you will know that in the history of Israel, there are a number of catastrophic events. And the first big catastrophic event is the split of the nation of Israel. And so you end up with 10 tribes splitting to the north, which becomes Israel, the capital becomes Samaria. And you get two tribes splitting south, which becomes Judah, and the capital is Jerusalem. Okay? Long story short, eventually, the 10 northern tribes so disobey God that they end up being exiled by the Assyrians. So the Assyrian superpower sweeps over, takes them away, and leaves a very small remnant of people in what we would call the northern part of Israel. But essentially, what is Israel, that part disappears for a period of time. The Assyrians then move south to destroy Jerusalem. But God does a miracle, an amazing miracle, and delivers them. And you can read that in the story of people like Isaiah, those sorts of prophets. And it's an amazing moment of deliverance. Now, you would think, after having just been delivered from the Assyrians, that the people would really concentrate and lean into what God has for them. But over a period of time, the area we call Judah, it also descends into terrible disobedience to God. And eventually, another superpower arises called the Babylonians. The Babylonians swallow up the Assyrians and the Babylonians come for Judah. And they eventually destroy, sack Judah and destroy Jerusalem. In fact, some of you follow maybe the Jewish calendar. And this very week, there has been a very solemn celebration in the Jewish calendar. It's called Tishab be Av, which is called the ninth of Av, which is the date that the temple of Solomon was destroyed. That's the temple that gets destroyed in Jeremiah. And the temple of Herod, that Jesus worshipped at, that temple got destroyed on exactly the same date. Wow, how weird is that? For two temples to be destroyed on the same date. And that's just been celebrated this year. So this is a catastrophic event. So the book of Jeremiah is not an easy read. That's the point, right? It's a hard read because we're moving towards an inevitable, very tragic conclusion which happens. And the Babylonians destroyed Jerusalem. They take the people into exile and the people remain there for a minimum of 70 years. Lots go on there as a result of that, in terms of that context. Now, the bit we're about to read, the reason, sorry for all that sounds really technical on a Wednesday night, but the bit we're about to read is a letter that God tells Jeremiah to send to the early waves of exiles. Okay? So Jeremiah's still in Jerusalem, but he's now writing to people of God who are now already in Babylon. And in fact, people tend to think that the exile happened in one moment, but actually, the exile happens in three waves. Okay? So the people are taken away in three stages. Jeremiah, at this stage, still in Jerusalem, and he's writing to the early waves of exile. Is that okay? Now, sorry about that, but if you don't get that, you won't get this. So you've really got to understand that there's a context to these amazing and challenging words. So here's what I want you to do. I want you to imagine you're sitting in Babylon and you're receiving this letter from Jeremiah. And the irony is that Jeremiah's been the guy who's saying, "You're all gonna be exiled, you're all gonna be exiled, you're all gonna be exiled." And now he's writing a letter that seems to be encouraging him in exile. So let's jump in. Here we go, Jeremiah, chapter 29. And I'm gonna start reading from verse four. So there's a little introduction, verses one to four, and I've sort of more or less given you that. So we will just jump into the content of the letter. And for sake of time, we'll just read down to verse 14, all right? So if you've got your Bible with you and you've got it open and you found that by now, that's jump in and see where we go. It says this, "This is what the Lord Almighty, the God of Israel, says to all those I carried into exile from Jerusalem to Babylon." So here's God's advice. "Build houses and settle down. Plant gardens and eat what they produce. Marry and have sons and daughters. Find wives for your sons and give your daughters in marriage, so that they too may have sons and daughters. Increase in number there; do not decrease. Also seek the peace," and some translations have, "the peace and prosperity of the city to which I have carried you into exile. Pray to the Lord for it, because if it prospers," or another translation might be, "if it has peace, you too will have peace." Yes, this is what the Lord Almighty, the God of Israel, says. "Do not let the prophets and diviners among you deceive you. Do not listen to the dreams you encourage them to have. They are prophesying lies to you in my name. I have not sent them," declares the Lord. This is what the Lord says. "When 70 years are completed for Babylon, I will come to you and fulfill my gracious promise to bring you back to this place. For I know the plans I have for you," declares the Lord, "plans to prosper you and not to harm you, plans to give you a hope and a future." That sounds slightly different than its context, doesn't it? It's quite amazing. Verse 12. "Then you will call upon me and come and pray to me, and I will listen to you. You will seek me and find me when you seek me with all your heart. I will be found by you," declares the Lord, "and will bring you back from captivity. I will gather you from all the nations and places where I have banished you," declares the Lord, "and I will bring you back to the place from which I carried you into exile." Now, here's a thought I want to begin with, and it's not an easy one, but hopefully, we'll be able to unpack this together. It sometimes requires a crisis to remind us of our purpose. Sometimes, a crisis needs to happen to us, either individually or collectively, to remind us of the purpose to which we have been called. And I think that what's happened to the people of God is just such a thing. Now, that's not a pleasant idea. And the Lord doesn't necessarily want to take us into crisis in order to get us to do what he wants us to do. But sometimes, the only way to sort of waking up the people of God is to bring them to a place where they start really concentrating again. My grandmother had a little phrase and it went something like this. "The threat of execution concentrates the mind." It's not very nice to have that as a fridge magnet or anything like that. But actually, there's truth in that. When you're under pressure, we tend to think more seriously about the things that we claim to believe or the things that we understand. Now, let's think about the people of God before we start to apply this to ourselves. When God called his people out of Egypt, he brought them to the foot of Mount Sinai. And at Mount Sinai, they spent a whole year listening to God. God started downloading a whole bunch of stuff to them that we would remember as the Ten Commandments and other things. And God starts to speak to them. But one of the first things that God says to them in the context of this moment is this. Listen to these words. He says, "Out of all the nations speaking to Israel, you will be my treasured possession. And although the whole world is mine, you will be for me a kingdom of priests and a holy nation." These are the words I speak to you. Now, that phrase, Exodus, chapter 19, verse six, is one of the most dynamic, missional statements in the Bible. We tend to think as Christians that mission only happens in the New Testament. No, no. God's plan has always been missional. God's plan has always been that if I bless a man, it's so that that man will bless the world. If I bless a people, it's so those people will bless the world. And that's exactly what happens with Abraham. God calls this man, he blesses this man, not just so that Abraham can be blessed and live happily ever after, but he blesses Abraham so that through that blessing, Abraham will be a blessing to the nations of the world. So this is God's plan. And out of one man and one woman, Abraham and Sarah, will come seed, Paul says. The divine seed. In fact, Jesus eventually comes from this seed. And through that seed, Paul tells us, the whole world gets blessed. And me and you are here today as a result of that amazing promise. So God's plan is, this idea is repeated over and over again. If I bless you, it's not just so that you are blessed, but so you bless. If I call you, it's not just so that you live in this beautiful world of being called and specialness and happy ever after, but it's so that you take the privilege of being called and share that with the world. If God blesses an individual or blesses a community of people, God's people in the Old Testament, what we call the church in the New Testament, if he blesses us, it's not just so that I can enjoy that blessing, but it is so that I can share that blessing. Now, that's not just an idea in the book of Acts. That's just not an idea in the Gospels. That's an idea right back in Genesis and traveling now into Exodus. And God rescues a group of people from Egypt. After hundreds of years of slavery, he brings them to the foot of a mountain. And the first thing he says to them is this. Essentially, "I have rescued you from Egypt so that you will be a kingdom of priests and a holy nation." Now, let's just think about that for a moment. What is God saying? He's saying to the whole nation, to every man, to every woman, and to every boy and every girl who identifies with the name of the Lord, he's saying to all of them, "I've called you to be a kingdom of priests, all of you." He's not talking there about the priesthood of Aaron. He's not talking there about the ceremonial priesthood where they do all those sacrifices. This bit hasn't come yet. He's talking to everybody. And here's what God means by this idea. He's saying to Israel, the nation, he said, "I've just rescued you from slavery. I've set you free from Egypt. Now, here's what I want you to be. I want you to be my priest representatives to the world." He's calling a nation to be the priests who will take the Lord to the world. Are you with me? And that's an Old Testament idea. That's not like in the book of Acts, that's not Exodus. And God's saying to Israel, "You have been rescued not just to enjoy the blessing that I want to give to you, but to carry that blessing to the world. You are to be the people, the community, that export me," forgive that language, "but export me to the world." All right? Are you with me so far? Is that okay? But he doesn't just leave it there. He says, "You're not just a kingdom of priests, you're to be a holy nation." Now, what's going on there? Well, at Mount Sinai, here's what God's doing. He's taken a ramshackle bunch of slaves and he downloads his precious wisdom and word. And round that wisdom and word, he's now going to build a community. He's going to build a nation. And if this nation follows the word and example of God, this nation will start to shine like a light in the darkness. That actually, they'll start to behave in a way that reflects into the darkness of the nations around them. So here's God's idea. God is saying, "Not only do I want you to carry me to the world, export me, take me to the nations of the world, but I want you as a community to live as an example to the nations of the world." So by following what we call the Torah, the words of God, the wisdom of God, the instruction of God, which touches every part of their life, they would start to build a society that so reflected the word of God that when the Canaanite and the Perizzite and the Hittite and all the otherites looked across the border at Israel, here's what they would conclude. Ah, that's what God looks like. God looks like that. Now, what does God look like? He looks like a group of people taking his word so seriously that they are becoming a holy nation. They are becoming a set apart community that looks like God. Because the God that Israel serves and the God that me and you serves has no image, there's no picture we can look at. So how does the nations of the world see the Lord? They see the Lord through the community in which the Lord lives. Are you with me? So when we think about the people of God, we're thinking about a community that has been, well, first of all, called by grace in Abraham to be a blessing to the nations of the world, to be blessed, to be a blessing. Are you with me so far? And then we've got a community rescued from slavery. And the first thing God says to the hundreds of thousands of former slaves is, "You are now my priests to the world and you are now going to be my holy nation to example me to the world." So at the foot of Mount Sinai, God is giving Israel a missional commission. They're not just meant to take the blessing of God and go, wow, we like this, this is good. Let's keep this for ourselves, right? We are blessed. No, no. They are meant to understand that all of that amazing blessing is so that they can export that idea to the world, that God to the world. And secondly, all of that amazing blessing is to be exemplled in the way they live among each other. Are you with me? Does that make sense? Now, that simple idea that should have traveled all the way through with the people of God over the passage of time gets lost, gets dissipated, it disappears. It gets swallowed up in selfishness and sin and idolatry. And Israel becomes ultimately a nation that, there are beautiful moments of difference and breakthrough, but generally speaking, there is this gradual descent into selfishness and idolatry and a sort of a sense of even nationalism that causes them to look at the world through a superior set of eyes. They are becoming everything that the Lord actually didn't want them to become. Are you with me? And this is reflected in very uncomfortable books in the Bible, like Jonah. Jonah is an edgy book. Jonah shows that a man of God has essentially developed a nationalistic and racist view to the Gentile world, that he doesn't want God to save the Gentiles. He doesn't want God to save Nineveh. In fact, at the end of the book of Jonah, he says to God, "I knew you would do this, I knew you would save them, that's why I didn't want to go." And Jonah, although it's a remarkable little story that we tell children in Sunday School, Jonah is one of the most subversive and controversial stories in the Bible because Jonah is a picture of Israel herself. Jonah is walking away from the responsibility of exporting God to the Gentiles and of being an example of God to the Gentiles. And he actually, if you read the book of Jonah, really honestly, he wants the Gentiles to die. Are you with me? Now, John, why you read Jeremiah, chapter 29? Why are you telling us all that? Here's why, right? These letters, these moments are not random, they're not sitting in vacuums. They are part of a big story. And Israel ends up being exiled because they're not doing the things God wants them to do. But here's the irony. Through the exile, the people of God end up somewhere where I think God always intended them to be. God never intended Israel to stay behind the boundaries of a border. But he wanted Israel to be the light to the Gentiles. This is the language of Isaiah. He wanted them to be, bring healing to the nations. And here's the amazing thing that happens. Through a catastrophic crisis and terrible moment, now the people of God, where do they find themselves? At the very heart of the empire that has swallowed them up, right? Instead of being a little pocket in the Middle East, far from everybody else, now look what's happened. God, through exile, I don't know if you noticed in Jeremiah 29, not very popular, but God says three times, "I sent you to exile. I sent you." Right? The Babylonians took them, but God sent them. But look what's happening. You can interpret this as they're being carried off to exile. Oh, this is terrible, and it was. But the other way to read it from Jeremiah 29 is that God is sending them to Babylon. Are you with me? There's a sense in which they're exiled to Babylon, they've been taken. Jeremiah, three times in the passage we read, said, "God sent them to Babylon." Right? Now, this is a hard idea and maybe I shouldn't have opted for this on a Wednesday night in Singapore when we normally have our prayer meeting. But here's the point. God wanted, God's plan was always that his people would go to Babylon. That's the point. His point was, that his passion was, they would have a holy nation in this beautiful part of the world we call Israel, but they were never meant to stay there. They were meant to take Yahweh. They were meant to take the Torah. They were meant to take God beyond the boundaries of their beautiful nation. And they were meant to go to Babylon. They were meant to go to Persia. They were meant to go to the ends of the earth. They were meant to do that. And sometimes, we as Christians, we read the book of Acts where Jesus is telling us to go into all the world and we'll be as witnesses in Jerusalem, Judea, Samaria, and the ends of the earth. And we think that's a new idea. But it's not. That's an ancient idea that God's always had and he's always wanted. And he's wanted his people to take the blessing they've received and share it. He's wanted his people to celebrate the fact that they are no longer slaves and share that. He's always wanted his people to go. And here, ironically and possibly controversially, even though it looks like on one side of the page, the Babylonians have taken them to exile, on the other side of the page, God is sending them to exile. And suddenly, suddenly now, hundreds of thousands of people who believe that Yahweh is God are living at the center of the most powerful superpower in the world. Are you with me? Now, if they live like they've always lived in Babylon, nothing will change. But if they wake up to the idea that while in Babylon, we can carry the God of Israel to Babylon, suddenly, opportunities arise. If they go to Babylon and they go, oh, I wish we were in Jerusalem. This isn't Jerusalem, this doesn't look like Jerusalem, the food's not like Jerusalem. I wish we could go back. If they go to Babylon and all they do is think about Jerusalem, they will miss the God opportunity that God has created for them. Through crisis and through tragedy, absolutely. But God has sent them. Why? Because he wants his people to awaken up, not just to the sin they've committed, but he wants them to awaken up to the original call. The original call was, "You're a kingdom of priests." The original call was, "You're a holy nation." The original call was, "You're meant to be the blessers of the nations." The original call was, "You're supposed to carry me to the nations." And here they are, through a very weird back door, through a very weird strategy, they find themselves in the center of Babylon. A horrible moment for all of them, without question, but they're there. And it's into that moment that Jeremiah writes. Why? Because if they can grab the opportunity, then God might be able to do something in them and through them, which none of them imagined possible. They now have the potential to be influencers of Babylon from the inside out. Cool idea, right? Cool idea, right? So it's interesting then, let's think about two other things before we go back to the text. Two other things that really lock this in. We see this very idea exemplled in God himself. How did God save the world? Well, it's not a trick question, go on. How did God save the world? He's, what did he do? Sent his son. And how did his son come to us? In a manger, okay, absolutely. Unpack that a wee bit more. As a man, right? Now, listen to this, look at this. To save the world, God had to leave somewhere and go somewhere. Now, hold, hold that idea, to save the world. Now, please don't be offended, don't hear what I'm not saying, or, or you'll kick me out as a heretic. To save the world, God became something he had never been before to save us. Here's what John, here's how John puts it. "The word became flesh." That had never happened before. Now, God had shown up in the Old Testament with a sort of a human jacket on, but incarnation as we understand it in the New Testament never happened before, it never happened again. It's a one-off, absolutely marvelously supernatural, mysterious, glorious, unique experience. Never again will the Holy Spirit fertilise a human egg and produce the God-man. That'll never happen again. That's a unique experience. Now, when you look at the Old Testament, you can see God sort of in a human type form. You can see Jesus, if you like, in a human type form. There's lots of examples of that, it's very exciting. It's like a little shadow of what's about to come. But when Jesus was born in the manger, God to save the world literally entered into another form to save us. Now, I don't wanna overcook this, but I'll throw it at you anyway. It's like, it's like he left Jerusalem and went to Babylon. Right? It's like he entered into another world. To do what? To save that world. And how does John describe Jesus? He said, "The word became flesh and made his dwelling among us." He didn't just show up for two minutes, he dwelt with us. In fact, the word that he uses in the Greek text is really amazing. "He tented with us." He made a tent and dwelt with us. And you hear the word "tent", ooh, there's all sorts of beautiful echoes to the Old Testament there. He tented, and John goes on to say, as if, just in case we don't see the connection, he says, "And we beheld his glory." Oh, where have we seen the glory of God before? Well, in this beautiful tent where God dwelt with his people so that his people could be a kingdom of priests and a holy nation. The whole thing's connected. So, so when God reaches out to Abraham and says to Abraham, "I'm gonna bless you to be a blessing", this is not random. This is the heart of the God that we serve. When God rescues slaves from Egypt and says, "I want you to be a kingdom of priests and a holy nation", this is not random, this is the heart of God. And then, as if to ram the point home, God himself does the very same thing. He becomes human. Still fully, fully God, but he becomes human so that he can step into our Babylon. Can I say this carefully? Foreign world, world beyond our normal community, and he steps into that in order to save us. Now, if that isn't enough, one last little nudge? Well, it's more than a little nudge. But when Jesus is giving his final teaching to his young disciples before he rescends back into heaven, he says this to them, "Stay here in Jerusalem and wait for the gift of the Holy Spirit." Here's what he says, "The Holy Spirit will come upon you and he will empower you. And when he empowers you, you will be my witnesses." And where? Jerusalem? Where else? Judea? Where else? Samaria? Where else? Ends of the world. Now, here's the danger for me and you as a New Testament Christian, that looks like a brand-new radical idea. But it's not. This is the heart of God beating again for the world. And he's saying to his community of believers, "You've been blessed to be a blessing. You've received the Holy Spirit to give the Holy Spirit. You've, you, you have received God's favour and grace so that you can share God's favour and grace." And he's calling them, quite literally, most of them young Jewish believers, not all of them, but most of them young Jewish believers at this stage, he's calling them to Babylon. He's calling them to a world beyond their own so that they can reach that world. Does that make sense to you? I don't know if it does or not, because you're not saying anything, so I'll keep going. All right, so, so here we go. So, so the point that I'm making is this. You can read the letter that Jeremiah now writes to the exiles, and you can read it as a bit of a random, one-off event. But the ideas are not random. They're not one-off. These are ideas that are reflecting the heart of God. God didn't just want a special nation called Israel, he doesn't just want a special community called the church, but God pulses for the nations of the world, and he pulses for those outside the community of faith. Is that okay? So how does that apply to me and you here in Singapore? Well, Jeremiah says some really interesting things, and I just wanna share them really, really quickly with you, I'm conscious of the time, and, and I, I wanna just encourage you in the context of this. Jeremiah is essentially saying to the people of God, "I know this is not where you want to be, but this is where you are. And if you live like you don't want to be, you will never engage with where you are." So he's urging them, look, I know you wanna get back to Jerusalem, but it's quite brutal and you probably heard it in the letter. He essentially says, "You're not getting out of here for another seventy years." Now, here's, here's the reality. A whole bunch of people hearing that letter being read would never get home. They would die in Babylon. That's a thought, isn't it? So if you think about it, if you're fifty years of age and you're hearing this letter being read, the chances are, you're not getting home. Okay? Maybe if you're ten years of age and you hear the letter being read, you might get home. So the vast majority of people hearing the letter read are not getting home. And Jeremiah is saying to them, "You need to make Babylon your home." Now, for a Jewish person who's been raised with the idea that God lives in Jerusalem and that God lives at the temple and God lives in Israel, that's a radically hard idea. And the ancient world often saw their gods living within boundaries. But the one thing that made our God different from the other gods is that our God was never restricted by boundaries. So Jeremiah's saying something really radical to them. The vast majority of people hearing this aren't getting home. So he's saying, "I need you to make Babylon your home." That's essentially the big idea. All right? Now, how does he do that? Three thoughts that I want to leave with you, and hopefully it might make sense, it might encourage you as you think about your own journey as a church community, seeking to reach your community and seeking to reach your nation or even, uh, even the peoples beyond you, even, can I say this carefully? Even, even sort of the world outside your normal boundaries that actually sit before us. So how does Jer- Jeremiah encourage this idea of, of make Babylon your home and love where you live? Well, first of all, he says this, he, he encourages them to embrace the place. All right? Now, look at his language, verse five. Look at the language, it's so powerful, he says, "Build houses. Settle down. Plant gardens. Eat the produce of your work." All right? Now, even a casual guy, we don't, we don't even need to look at the Hebrew words there. Even a casual glance at that text screams permanence. Doesn't it? I mean, if, if they were, if they were gonna get out of there, he could have said rent houses. Short-term strategy, you don't need to buy, rent. Stock market's probably gonna crash, you know, the housing market will crash once the Babylonians are overtaken by the Persians. So don't build your own houses, because it's all gonna, but no, he tells them, "Build." He tells them, "Settle." He tells them, "Plant." He tells them, "Eat." Right? What's he saying to them? He's exactly. He's saying to them, he's saying to them, "Open your arms to Babylon." Now, he's not saying, "Open your arms to the philosophy of Babylon or to the way of Babylon", but he's, he's saying, "Open your arms to the place." If you arrive in Babylon with your arms closed and your mind closed and your heart closed, then actually, you're gonna be no more used to Babylon than you were back in Jerusalem. Brothers and sisters, it is possible to live in a place, but not embrace a place. Now, I need to be careful what I say to you, because I know you're all residents here, but it's possible to live in Singapore, not embrace it. Are you with me? Possible to live in a community and not embrace it. Possible to live in an apartment block and not embrace it. Possible for us to be a group of wonderful, vibrant Christians in this beautiful building, in this beautiful part of Singapore, and not embrace. Is that possible? It's, it's happened to me, so let me be really vulnerable with you. When I was the principal of the Bible College, the Assembly of God Bible College, the Bible College was situated in a beautiful campus in a little village called Matarsee. So Matarsee had a population of about eight hundred people. Beautiful, I mean, a beautiful village. And many people sort of lived there, you know, uh, it, it almost felt like a sort of a semi-retirement village. So there were people with jobs, but a lot of people lived there who had sort of retired there or grown up. So it was a sleepy, lovely little village. Now, here's what happened to me. I worked on that campus for about eighteen months, in fact, I lived on that campus. There was a, a special lovely home given to the principal to live there while working there. And I lived in Matarsee for eighteen months, the village, and never embraced it once. Now, I've got an excuse, pastor, because like I was busy teaching students how to love Jesus, right? I was busy trying to train students to go to the ends of the world. Anyone see the irony of that? I'm teaching students to go to the end of the world and I'm not embracing the village that I'm, it's right in front of me. I'm living there, but that's all. And here's what Jeremiah's trying to say to the, to the, to the Jewish people. He's trying to say to them, "Here's the temptation, you're gonna lock down, you're gonna try and weather this storm because you're hoping you're gonna get out of here sooner than you think." And he's saying, "You're not. Get over this." I mean, he's really brutal with them. "Get over it. Lock it down, seventy years. This is gonna happen, no one's getting out of here before seventy years." So here's what he's saying. "Some of you are simply going to ignore the Babylonians, and that's a mistake." He said, "Don't ignore them, build. Settle. Plant. Eat. Become part of the Babylonian world." That doesn't mean you have to become a Babylonian, but you've got to open up your heart to the place you're in. And brothers and sisters, for us here specifically as a Christian community, but for the Christian communities across the world, if we're going to see an impact in our world, we must embrace the bit of our world we are in. It's not enough for me and you to just live there. If we just live there, here's what will happen. We'll come, we'll go. We'll, we'll come to this beautiful community, we'll go back to that community, we'll go to work, we'll come back to that community, we'll come to this community. We're doing a lot of living, but not a lot of embracing. Are you with me? I, I've just spent a week with students in Tongling, and I've been showing them that Jesus saturated himself into his world. He didn't just come and like, go straight to the cross. He didn't go from, from heaven to the cross. He lived thirty-three years among ordinary people. He paid his taxes. He saw friends and family die. He suffered. He saw Roman oppression. He lived in his world, and yet in the midst of that, he embraced his world. He embraced that so that he could reach that. Yes? Does that make sense to you? And if we're gonna be men and women that mission our locality, that, that become lights in the darkness, then actually, it's not enough to just live here. We somehow need to find a way to embrace here. Now, I, I know this church has been through a bit of a journey, you, you've allowed me into your journey, and some of that journey's been very, very painful, but let me just, just drive out a little correlation. Sometimes we end up in a painful moment to remind us of our purpose. Israel ends up in a moment of deep pain, and what God is trying to do amongst other things is remind them, "This is what you were meant to be at the beginning. You're meant to be my light in the darkness, my kingdom of priests and my holy nation in the nations of the world." That make sense to you? Uh, and, and if we keep our arms closed, you can't embrace. In order to embrace, we have to sort of open up, we have to take a risk, we have to take a risk with the Babylonians. All right? We've gotta, we've gotta be open to the world in which we live, open to that apartment block, open to that community, open to that world, open to those around us. Now, some of those people we like, some of those people we don't like, some of those people we don't even know, and we're not even sure, we want to know them, right? But Jeremiah's saying, "Build. Settle. Plant. Eat. Embrace. Embrace the place." Because if you embrace the place, then it may be we come to love the place. I've just discovered this principle, it's very hard to change what we do not love. Is that okay? Just a little thought for you. Here's the second idea, I'll keep moving, you're doing brilliant. I know it's been a long day for many of you, saying, "John, hurry up, let's get this over with." The second idea is not just in terms of embracing the place, but I believe he's telling us to engage in the possibilities. If embrace the place is about where, then engaging the possibilities is about what? Now, look at his language, look at verse six. Really strange conversation, he says, "Marry and have sons and daughters. Find wives for your sons and, uh, your sons and give your daughters in marriage." Why? "So that they too may have sons and daughters." And then he says, "Increase in number there and do not decrease." Now, there's an obvious reason for this advice, right? I mean, it's an obvious thing. He's, he's encouraging marriage within the Jewish community and children so that the Jewish ethnicity is not lost. All right, so that's, that's a clear idea, right? So, so this, this is what he's clearly asking them to do, and that is probably one of the primary ideas. But I believe there's potentially another idea in the context of the flow of Jeremiah that is worthy of your consideration. It's probably the, the, the less popular idea, but I think it's possibly there. Remember, at this moment in world history, the temple is about to be destroyed. It hasn't quite been destroyed, as Jeremiah As Jeremiah writes, the temple is still standing. By the end of the book of Jeremiah, it's all gone, it's all gone, it's all destroyed. Now, remember what the temple was. The temple was the representation of the presence of God. God lived in the temple. All right, that's the idea. When the temple is gone, where does God live? He lives where he always wanted to live. Where? In a people. I, I would submit to you that although God blesses the temple, it wasn't his idea. The temple wasn't God's idea, the temple was David's idea. The idea that God designed was a tent. A tent that would be flexible, a tent that would sit at the center of his world, a tent that would move and we would move. A tent that represented God's otherness and connectedness to his people. It's an amazing idea. Right? Now, God blesses the temple ultimately and does amazing stuff through that temple. But, but God, even when he lets Solomon build it, he reminds Solomon, I actually don't live there. I'll come and dwell there, but I don't live there. Stephen picks this up in the Book of X as well. God actually doesn't live in the temple. He lives in the people. And here's, here's the amazing thought then, when we go into the New Testament and Herod's temple is eventually destroyed, it's a reinforcing idea of the gospel, that we move from a place to a people. We move from a building to a community. We're coming full circle, this was always God's idea. Genesis reminds us that God wanted to live in community, not in a building. If God wanted a building from the beginning, he would have just said, build me a building. But he never wanted the building, he wanted to be in a tent that traveled with people. He always wanted to live among people. And he wanted his people to be his representatives to his world. So here we have this incredible moment, the temple is about to disappear. By the time we get to the end of Book of Jeremiah, it's gone. So by the time some of these people probably get to hear this letter, cause it would have taken a few months to get there, by the time some of them get to hear the letter, the temple may actually have been destroyed. So here's a suggestion, when Jeremiah says marry and given marriage, when Jeremiah says have children and reproduce and increase, could it be that Jeremiah is saying that in the increasing of God's people, we have the potential for God's presence to be seen? With no temple, how is God seen? Through a people. With Jerusalem thousands of miles away, how do we see God? Through a people. And so Jeremiah is saying to them, listen, don't decrease in exile, increase. Because if you increase, who are you? Oh, I know who you are, you're a kingdom of priests. If you increase, who are you? You're a holy nation. And so if the kingdom of priests increase, and if the holy nation increase, theoretically, what's potentially increasing is the possibility of seeing the presence of God in their world, in Babylon. The Babylon, the Babylonians have a chance of seeing God. Because they are in Babylon. Incredible thought. And actually, this is one of the things that you and I must not underestimate, that we are carriers of the presence of God to our community, individually and collectively. Uh, and sometimes, sometimes when we, when we think about mission, we, we just think about going out and reaching people, uh, and challenging people and touching people. But actually, as a community, we're also carriers of the presence of God, carriers of the power of God, carriers of the Holy Spirit. We collectively are men and women who carry him to the world. And you, as a community of believers in Jesus, carry something no one else carries. There is something here, literally in this room, that is not in other places in Singapore. Right? Because we are the community of God. We are the people of God. And so, so Jeremiah is saying to them, increase. If you increase, the possibilities are that the presence of God is being seen practically and demonstratively in Babylon. And so you and I are carriers of that presence, and we mustn't underestimate that. That's something that we've got to keep coming back to. To remember that actually, it's not just about our wonderful programs, and it's not just about our beautiful building, and it's not just about all the amazing stuff we do together, but there is a supernatural element to us as a community. We are carriers of the presence of God. We are carriers of this sense that God is with us. And he's with you in your apartment block in a way that he's not with your neighbor. He is with you in that business in a way that he's not with your boss. He's with you in the community in a way that he's not with other people. Why? Because though he loves all of those people, he uniquely presents himself amongst his people. We are his temple. We are his representatives. We are his ambassadors. We are the ones who are carrying him to our world. And so Jeremiah really encourages them to see their own distinctiveness as carriers of the presence of God. Here's the last idea, and then I'll draw this to a close, and, and maybe, maybe we'll pray. He says lastly, not just, uh, embrace the place or engage the possibilities, but here's the third one. He tells them to enrich the people. Now, look at this, look at this language, verse seven, he says this. Now, some translations have the word prosperity, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna translate the word shalom as peace. Now, look at this, and seek the peace of the city where I have caused you to be, carried away as captives, and pray unto the Lord for it, for in its peace you shall have peace. Now, this is really, really important, and I wanna, I wanna just, just wanna just nail something here that's very, very important to me. Anybody can bring prosperity. Only we bring peace. So I, I've heard people preach out of this and we love the prosperity, but you know, if we prosper, life's better. Maybe, sometimes, in different ways. Here's, here's the danger, ladies and gentlemen, we think if Singapore prospers, that's the key. And it might well be, I'm not gonna push back on that, but here's what I do know, non-Christians can bring prosperity. People of other faiths can bring prosperity. Men and women who are not, who don't even believe in God can be entrepreneurial and bring prosperity. Non-believing politicians can help bring prosperity. Our job is not to bring prosperity. Our job is to bring peace. Shalom, the shalom of God. And actually, can the shalom of God bring prosperity? I'm sure it can, in fact, there's a connection between God's shalom and prospering, absolutely. But the focus, look, Babylon didn't need any more money. Right? Babylon was hoovering up the nations of the world. Babylon had gold running over the walls of its treasuries because of the nations that it was conquering all around it. Jeremiah cannot simply be asking them to pray that Babylon gets more prosperous. Come on. It, it can't be what he's praying, because they're already at a world level, a superpower, and super rich as an empire. And that riches and wealth is not turning them to God. It's making them God. Probably too much for a Wednesday night, right? It's, it's probably too, but, but listen, praying that our nation prospers is not what we're called to do. Praying that our nation experiences the shalom of heaven through Jesus Christ, that's our job. Now, if Singapore happens to prosper, and it is prospering, thank God for that. Thank God for the prosper, uh, material prosperity of this nation. Thank God for the things that God is doing in you and among you, it's absolutely wonderful. I'm very grateful that I've grown up in a relatively prosperous nation that has allowed me to do things around the world. It wouldn't have been possible without that prosperity. But part of that is because I've understood that that prosperity isn't just for me to like, live well, it's for me to go well. Right? Don't just go, Lord, prosper Singapore. No. Don't pray that prayer. Lord, bring your shalom to Singapore. Lord, prosper my neighbor, no. The chances are your neighbor will get more money and forget God quicker. Right? Don't pray for your neighbor to prosper, pray for shalom. Your neighbor needs shalom. Your apartment block needs shalom. Our nation needs shalom. The people around us need shalom, they don't, they don't need more prosperity, as, as good as that is. And listen, I, I live in a nice house and I live in a nice world, right? So I'm not trying to be a hypocrite here. But, but Jeremiah is not saying, pray the Babylonians have more money. Cause that's good for you. No, no, he's saying, if they experience God's peace, that's good for you. Come on, are you with me? And that's our call. I, I, I loved being part of Love Singapore last week, but you know, when we were called to pray for the prosperity of, of Singapore, I wasn't just praying that, that Singapore would prosper, I was praying that they would prosper in peace. Yeah, it's great, it's great to have all the trappings, but Lord, let your peace, let your shalom come to this nation. Let, let it invade every corridor of the government, let it invade every people group that's represented here. Let the peace of God come to our world. Because when the peace of God comes, the shalom of God comes to the heart of a man or woman, then they change, and that's good for all of us. Yes? Anybody can bring prosperity. Now, let me be very careful what I'm about to say, anybody can bring prosperity, but only you can bring peace. Now, when I say you, you are representative of the Christian community of Singapore. Amen? I live in a prosperous nation and we are falling apart. We are falling apart. Socially, we are on the edge, racially, we are on the edge. In so many areas, our nation is more divided than it's ever been. And yet, we're apparently in the top seven richest countries of the world. Don't know how people work that out, cause we're fundamentally broke, but there we are, it, do you know what I mean? The issue with, with Ma, so let me speak about Britain, the issue with Britain is not prosperity. The issue with Britain is a lack of shalom. And the only community that can bring shalom to Britain is the community that has received its shalom. Amen? Does that make sense to you? It's just a different way of reading it and thinking about it. Now, as I draw this to a close, let me ask the question, did Jeremiah's letter work? Cause he writes, and he says, build, settle, plant, eat, marry, have families. Bring the shalom of God to Babylon. Did that work? Well, let me give you some examples that suggest it probably did. Think of Nehemiah. Nehemiah is a book written in the heart of exile. And who's Nehemiah? Nehemiah is the cupbearer to the most powerful man in the world. And ironically, the walls of Jerusalem get rebuilt because the most powerful man in the world essentially helps bankroll the plan. But the reason the most powerful man in the world helps bankroll the plan is because a Jewish man embraced Babylon and then Persia. Nehemiah is doing Jeremiah. Are you with me? Another example might be Daniel. Wow. That's another book totally written in the exile. It's an exilic book. And Daniel and his friends rise to preeminence in the Babylonian courts in the most amazing way. And of course, a room like this will know all the cool stories of Daniel and the fiery furnace and the lion's den, all that cool stuff. But remember, all of that is taking place right in the heart of exile, right in the heart of the superpower. Not only does Daniel serve well in Babylon, but Daniel serves Persia. Cause the Persians rise up as a superpower and swallow up the Babylonians. And then the Greeks will swallow up the Persians and the Romans will swallow up the Greeks, and on and on it goes, right? So this is our world, but, but Daniel survives Babylon and serves Persia. In fact, under the Persian emperor or king, he becomes one of the three most powerful men in Persia. Here's a lovely wee thought about Daniel, you read the Book of Daniel, in the Book of Daniel, Daniel's name is changed to a Babylonian name known as Beltyshazar. Which is the sort of, Belle is the god of Babylon. Right? But Daniel never calls himself Beltyshazar. He always calls himself Daniel. Daniel understands, I am a Hebrew in Babylon. I'm planting, living, sowing, investing, marrying, having children, giving my children in marriage, but I am still Daniel. We can embrace Babylon and not lose our identity, we can embrace where we live and not lose who we are. Me and you, living well in our world and embracing our world and loving our world, doesn't threaten who we are as Daniel. Did it work? Well, maybe the last example could be Esther and Mordecai. My daughter, youngest daughter loves the story of Esther, and that is again, another exilic book. A book of Jews influencing Persia from the inside out. Esther and Mordecai are doing Jeremiah. Daniel, Shadrach, Meshach and Abednego are doing Jeremiah. Nehemiah is doing Jeremiah. In other words, we have outstanding books in the Bible that I would argue are a direct result of people listening to Jeremiah's letter, where he pens the words of God, and he said, I know you don't wanna be there, but love where you live, embrace where you live, engage with where you live, enrich where you live, be God's holy priesthood where you live, be God's holy nation where you live, bring the shalom of God to where you live, be the representatives of the people of God where you live. And if you do that, Jeremiah is saying, you'll not just survive, so that you all get home in the end, or at least, if not you, your children or your children's children, you'll not just survive, you'll thrive. You'll not just survive, you'll influence, you'll not just survive, you'll be light, you'll not just survive, you will impact Babylon, you will impact Persia by the power of God. And what we see in that beautiful story is, if you like, a, a shadow of what we, the Christian community, are ultimately called to be. We are called to be God's holy nation and God's priesthood into our world. Right where we are, maybe for some of us, there's a, a call to be on where we are. But at the very least, me and you as a Christian community are thinking about the world we live in, loving the world we live in, and seeking to be God's representatives in the world that we live in. Sometimes a crisis is a way of reminding us of our purpose. Reminding us of what we were and are originally. Reminding us of what we were and are originally meant to be and meant to do. And you and I are called to be that light in the darkness. We're called to be His representatives to our world. And we're called to carry Him to those around us, to those who are our Babylon. Amen? That makes sense to you? I've come to an end, but I want to pray for you. And I want to pray for each one of us that we would understand the heart of God. We have a God who to make the world stepped into creation, formed a place, built a community so that He could walk with that community and share Himself. The God who picked a man and built a nation. The God who called a nation and wanted to send a priesthood. The God who became flesh and lived among us so that we could see His glory. The God who raised up a community of young men and women and said, now go and be My representatives to the world. We are part of that story, you're part of the Abraham story, you're part of the Israel story, you're part of the incarnation story, you're part of the early church story, you're part of this story. We are the continuation of the story of God crying out, reaching out to Babylon to touch it for His grace and for His glory. Will you stand with me? Thank you so much. I know I've talked for a long time and it's probably felt a bit heavy that, so I hope not unbearably heavy. Lord, I pray for my brothers and sisters tonight and Lord, I ask that you will do something in all of our hearts that we won't just live here, but we will embrace here. Lord, wherever here is for each one of us, whatever it looks like, that we will be men and women who embrace our Babylon, embrace where we are, even if where we are is not where we want to be. That you will help us to embrace our community. Help us to open up our hearts to embrace our apartment block, to embrace our office, to embrace our family, to embrace people who live beyond our normal boundaries, to embrace those who are different, to embrace those that you have placed us among. And Lord, I pray that just as Jeremiah encouraged the people of God to embrace the place where they lived, to love the place where they lived, to open up their arms and their hearts to Babylon and to engage with the world around them, I pray that we will see those ideas in a fresh way. Lord, we want to thank you that you became flesh and embraced the world. And Lord, will you help this church community as we are seeking to move out, as we are seeking to move beyond, as we are seeking to move in, as we are seeking, oh God, to be your kingdom of priests, your holy nation in this locality? Lord, may something of the spirit of this amazing letter written thousands of years ago speak to us today. Because Lord, we know the plans you have for us. The plans you have for us are to prosper us, the plans you have for us are to work in us and through us and perfect your purpose. And Lord, those plans are not just plans for tomorrow and the future, but they are plans for right now in the midst of our Babylon. And so, Lord, I pray you will help us, you will lead us, you will guide us and direct us. May we be open-hearted to you, to your call and to your world. And may we love where we live. In Jesus' name, in Jesus' name. Amen?